Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for, is there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor's staff have no changes to the agenda to present this evening.
Okay. Next item will be public forum. I'll open that up now. Is there anybody here wishing to address the council this evening? Step up to the podium, give your name and address, and let us know why you're here.
My name is Joey Bryant. I live at Five Adams Place. A couple council meetings ago, you guys had a developer that came in and proposed a little bit of a change in what we had agreed in the years past. Was it 50/50? Now they went with an 80/50 is what they proposed. How can we have one of our council members vote on this when I personally believe in most of our town does that there's a conflict of interest?
Well, that's a question I will point to our city attorney, but I don't believe we've taken any action on that builder's agreement at this point.
No, no, I understand that. And yeah, you didn't vote, but I think that that council member made a motion to vote on it that night. So again, my question is, how can he have a place in stand or he more than his daughters involved, his son-in-law's involved, and his grandkids are involved?
Currently, I don't believe there was actually a motion placed that evening as the council had already said that we weren't going to take action on that particular builder's agreement at that time.
Okay.
But appreciate your concerns.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here?
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Brody Flavin, 724 West 5th. And to echo Mr. Bryant's concerns about about the council member, there is an obvious conflict of interest with with this and his family being involved in this development. And I would call for him to recuse himself from any negotiations or votes on this particular matter. In addition to this, when we consider to, when we consider making any type of 80/20 split or 50/50 split, we need to consider also what it's going to look like for an out-of-town developer to come in. If an out-of-town developer were to come in and say, you know, you've given this person, you know, 80/20 split on this, but you're only going to give me 50/50, that's not equitable at that point. That's not fair to to anyone else wanting to come in and do business with us. And so I think we need to, we need to be concerned about that when we consider this matter in the future. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else here wishing to address the council tonight in public forum? If not, we'll close the public forum part of our agenda, and I'll ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'd make a motion to approve the consent consent agenda for September 13th, 2021, as presented.
Second. We have the motion and the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Move on to unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, which is nice. So we'll move on to new business. And the first item on under new business is a public hearing for the revenue neutral rate. I will open that public hearing now if anybody wishes to address the council regarding the revenue neutral rate. Seeing no action from the crowd, I will close that public hearing, and I believe there is a a motion we'll need for that.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no discussion or questions on this matter, I would make a motion. Are we ready? Ready?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna say is, yeah, you'll need.
It's all looks. Okay, okay.
You need to approve the resolution before you move on to a discussion.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 09-13-21-11, a resolution of the City of Halsted, Kansas, to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to adopt this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That resolution will pass. Next, I'm going to open a public hearing for the proposed 2022 city budget. So anybody here wishing to address the council regarding our 2022 budget now's the time.
Do I need to introduce myself again?
Yes.
Okay. Brody Flavin, 724 West 5th. The only concern I have with the budget, and maybe not so much a concern, is just I recall it was a year or two ago, there was some discussion about some potential renovations or repairs needed to the wastewater treatment plant. And are any of those figured into the budget that is being presented tonight?
Yes, in the wastewater fund, essentially, the city did have a state revolving loan that was for previous upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. And then per the council direction, those have been rolled into reserves, so we didn't obligate that for operations. And that will be used either for eventual financing of what we assume would be another revolving loan for anticipated expenditures or just paying, you know, for certain upgrades outright from the reserves as opposed to, you know, having to look at a rate increase.
Okay, but there's nothing, at this point in time, there's nothing scheduled as far as as any updates or anything as far as what we were talking about a few years ago?
Uh, no, we're still waiting for the final draft of the solutions report, for lack of a better, of the full evaluation that started two years ago, and then COVID delayed that process. But hopefully, at some point this year, we'll have that final to present back to the to the governing body with the options for the plant, and then what's the best way to proceed as far as getting our plant the needed upgrades it needs?
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the council regarding the 2022 budget? Seeing no movement, I will close the public hearing regarding the 2022 budget. And I believe we'll need a motion for a resolution on that as well.
Just approval of the budget?
Approval.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no more discussion or questions regarding this matter, I would make a motion to adopt the 2022 budget for the City of Halsted, authorizing governing body signatures on the state forms and authorizations to provide said forms to Harvey County and the State of Kansas.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve the 2022 city budget. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is consideration of Southern Star Firm Transport Agreement for Natural Gas. I'm going to go to Ethan on this, and Ethan, you may just put the background why we're doing this.
Sure. So as you're aware, we buy through Kansas Municipal Gas Agency. In terms of securing gas supply, our gas supply is transported via the Southern Star Central Gas Pipeline and then put into the Black Hills Distribution System before hitting city gates and coming under our local distribution system. Following winter storm Yuri, Southern Star reached out to K M G A and strongly encouraged any cities that did not have firm transport agreements, particularly in the winter months, to enter into those. So K M G A would enter into this on the city's behalf. The big difference is before we had what would be considered secondary supply. So in winter storm area, there was actually a chance that because we had no firm transport contracts in place, we could have had gas shut off when they went to operational flow orders. This would see that the City of Halsted has a secure rate. We do guarantee to buy or transport a certain amount of gas on the SSC Pipeline in those months of November through March. We were already paying, you know, tariffs and fees on this to the other cities that we were basically utilizing excess gas in other K M G A member cities, their transport, firm transport agreements. This gives the City of Halsted their own and secures that supply in those critical winter months. In the summer, we, K M G A would basically go back to the normal as there's not as much of a demand for supply. Looking at, and provided the information that K M G A did as far as their analysis, it's about a break-even point as far as costs to us, no matter which way we did it, because again, whether we were utilizing excess capacity on another city's contract or that when we get into if tariffs were being charged or something, we were paying those regardless. So same thing would happen here. You know, in November, if we've obligated 600 M M B T U a day, we go over 620, then we're going to pay a tariff on that 20 units that went over. But this also means that we're first in line and not a secondary in those winter months, which are obviously crucial for human needs, that we have that firm transport. So. And then this, I guess to clarify, is an agreement between the city and K M G A, and K M G A is the one that will actually enter into the agreement with SSC. So you had the larger SSC paperwork in your packet, but really what the city is signing is that one-page acknowledgement. And then K M G A will manage this like they have. So.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'd make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor's signature on the transportation service agreement with the Kansas Municipal Gas Agency and Southern Star Central Gas Pipeline.
Second. You have the motion and the second to approve this firm transport agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Next item on our agenda is, oh, that motion carries, by the way. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 1314. This is a standard traffic ordinance update. I believe this is a housekeeping item, correct, Ethan?
Yeah. Not a, not a lot to break down or get into. Brad could probably answer any updates that were there, but we do this every year just to keep ourselves in line with any recent changes in state law.
Any major changes, Brad, between this year and last year?
One in particular that has been lobbied for for a number of years. Terms of driving while suspended, historically, it's almost treated more severely than DUI cases, or it has been. And one of the the biggest issues with it is the vicious cycle individual defendants get into, which is once you're sus, you're convicted of driving while suspended, you're suspended again for getting a driving while suspended. And in many instances, people are suspended because they can't pay the fines. They can't work if they can't drive, so they drive, then they get stopped for driving while suspended, so they get another one. Now they serve jail time, they get it suspended for a year. And then they still owe all of the fines and the costs, which have now enhanced quite a bit. So they drive again, and then they get another driving while suspended, that kind of thing. They have changed the law and liberalized it significantly. It was signed into law in Wichita, I think Senator Godell, Senator Godell, who sponsored it, and the governor went to Wichita to sign it, May the 6th. What it allows for now is restricted licenses. Even if you are suspended, can't pay your fines right now, you can get a restricted driver's license to and from work medical emergencies, that kind of thing, so you can hopefully earn enough money to pay it off and dig out of that hole. They also allow the courts, including ours, to waive the reinstatement fees, which are a fairly significant sum for a lot of people as well that keep them from getting their license. They also got rid of the 90-day waiting period that was in place. Once you were qualified, you still had to wait 90 days to get your license back. All of that's been taken out of it. You can petition the courts for a reduction of your fines as well to try to help in terms of expediting you being fully qualified for a regular license. That one's a big deal in terms of how it impacts a lot of people. That's probably the major change in terms of our code. Most everything else really stood pretty much the way it was with a few minor changes and enhancement as to when we go from a B to an A, even under the S T Os, but that's primarily under the Public Offense Code, so that's about it.
If there is no further questions or discussion, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 1314 and adopt the standard traffic ordinances.
Second. Have the motion and the second to approve ordinance number 1314. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. We'll move on to ordinance number 1315, and this covers Uniform Public Offense Code. Again, another housekeeping item. Council, you have any questions to Brad regarding this?
Yes, same question, Mike, would have asked, is anything?
Nothing materially different in terms of the criminal offenses. Again, if you remember, the S T Os cover traffic. The Public Offense Code deals with all the misdemeanors, unclassified Cs, Bs, and As. A lot of people confuse a few of them, like DUI, that is still under the traffic code. Criminal trespass, criminal damage, battery, assault, all of the standard things you hear in terms of criminal infractions in a limited jurisdiction court at the misdemeanor level are covered under the Public Offense Code.
Okay.
There is no further discussion, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 1315, the, and adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve ordinance 1315. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That ordinance will carry. Next item on our agenda is discussion of solid waste recycling contract. I'm sure Ethan has some kind of an update for us regarding that.
Yeah. So we are actually at, in, nearing the end of our fifth year with Nysley Brothers. Previously, the city was with Waste Connections, included the contract in there. They did allow essentially for basically a three-year extension that saw the rates increase six to seven percent. Mind you, they did not increase rates, or the contract did not call for rate increases in that initial five-year term outside of certain things they couldn't control, like the Harvey County Transfer Station increasing its fees, or if there was a huge spike in fuel cost or something that they'd have to come back and negotiate. We did have one off-cycle increase, if you will, that was due to the Harvey County Transfer Station increasing that tippage fee per ton that did see us go slightly above, provided all those rates, as well as the new rates, still equals to about a six percent increase if we go with three-year extension with Nysley. The other option the city has is to essentially go out to bid for the services again. The other reason we're bringing this up is, you all recall, recycling has changed dramatically. And Harvey County in May will finally be off of their contract that is well below market price for recyclables, and that's anticipated to go up quite a bit. As it's no longer mandated, the city, you know, could, at current, we worked it out with Nysley, that we kept recycling kind of as optional, residents didn't have to do it, or they could. We didn't adjust rates or anything. We just continued to offer it as a covered service, but the city has the option to pull recycling completely and just say, hey, we only want solid waste at this point. So really, just looking for policy direction, because if we're going to make a change, then we need to get those RFPs out and get a timeline to get it back, because it, it is a bit of a chore to switch all those carts out if, you know, another vendor was was successful. I anticipate if we went out for bid, we would probably receive bids from Waste Connection and Nysley. We contacted seven refuse companies in the area, and those were the only two that responded five years ago. To my knowledge, there's been no major market changes as far as waste management, looking to add new territory or anything like that, so. But leave that up for all of you of what you would like us to do.
If we, if we lock in, or if we take this three-year extension, will that lock in our recycle costs?
Not necessarily because of the tippage rate with Harvey County. And that is still kind of an unknown of where that contract is going to fall in terms of price.
So we could still see a rate increase come May, a significant rate increase?
Depending, I know when the initial talk of the increase and, you know, the contamination issue came up. I mean, we did have several discussions with Nysley on several options, one that they had, you know, local the ability, or they handle recyclables kind of on their own. So that was one option that was considered at the time, but as Harvey County wasn't increasing, we continued our recyclables going there. So there are some options, and I'm sure we could still continue to look, or at that point, say, you know, since it's not mandatory, we just want to remove recycling, and and what change does that have to the contract overall?
It'd be interesting to see the data with regards to when we were required to recycle versus when we weren't required to recycle and see what those stats look like with the city to see if it's to our advantage to potentially remove that.
Yeah. I'd say right now, the way we allow them to handle it is if they suspect contamination, to avoid those fees from Waste Connection or getting potentially, you know, basically, if they suspect contamination at all, we gave them the right to pull resident carts out of the recycle program. And then we also essentially authorized them to dump all recyclables on the solid waste side if they suspected, because it's it's just a better price point for them and for our customers to not not pay that fee that Waste Connections was going to charge for contaminated loads. So. I don't have off the top of my hand, like, how many we had that voluntarily withdrew recycling, and because the the estimated price is still pretty volatile, they were very hesitant to give an idea of how much they were going to raise recycle fees. On the solid waste side, basically, they had the option to raise a fee 10 cents for every dollar increase on tonnage. But when recycling, if you're talking about going from a, I forget what the county's at now, 30-some-odd, you know, for recycling to 150-plus a ton for recycling, I mean, that's recycling would definitely become a very expensive thing, where I think we'd have to change our rate structure and and more, make it a you're definitely opting in at this. We can't offer it at that one flat price like we have been.
So if it has been, so let's say that we do have that increase come May, the May timeframe. We still have the ability to withdraw the recycling program, right? If it becomes too expensive, or are we locked into the contract?
Um, I, I believe Nysley would work with us to remove that completely if we wanted to, because that was one of the options they presented of, you know, we'll go down to this price if you just tell us, come pull all the recycle carts in the city. And at the time, we had a lot of residents that said we would like to keep it if at all possible. But once we have what we can actually feasibly say are rates
Yeah.
or anticipated rates from the county, and Nysley knows exactly what that cost to them would be for us, I think we would probably have a pretty substantial rate to even request a renegotiation of the contract, because that's a that's going to be a significant change in rates.
Major unforeseen circumstance. Also, in our current contract, there was, there was language in there regarding subject to review, that's kind of some wiggle room that we could also rely upon, I think.
Okay.
Or we could ask, even if we do the extension, ask as part of the extension to do an addendum that says, you know, once right, once you've established recycling rates, you know, we reserve the right to.
Yeah.
And we still have a 60-day cancellation regardless, so.
I'm in favor of us staying with them, but.
Yeah.
How does, how does staff feel about the interaction with Nysley, number one? And number two, has you, have you gotten feedback from the citizens about Nysley?
Yeah, I mean, we have a very good working relationship with Nysley. Never, haven't encountered any issues that we haven't been able to resolve to to their satisfaction and ours. Most of the time, I haven't heard anything negative from citizens, and and from the customer service side, I know, you know, oftentimes, we have to ask citizens, you know, to reach out to Nysley directly for for certain things, or large item pickup dumpster. And a lot of them do and have never, never reported an issue back to us as far as their satisfaction. I mean, we didn't have issues with Waste Connections either, full disclosure, at least in my time with the city. I mean, we it's a pretty big contract, and and you develop a pretty good working relationship with them, so. But we've been, we've been good, and one of the things that, you know, I think one of the factors the council took into consideration when awarding Nysley was not just price point, but they did or do provide some services, like the porta-potties for old settlers and stuff up to a point, free of charge. So that saved us some money on those aspects, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in favor of extending.
Let's just stay in where?
Sure.
With them for now.
Do you need any action on this tonight, Ethan?
I think general consensus would be, or is the consensus to try and get that language in there to allow for the recycling?
Yeah, we, yeah, I'd agree.
We can get that and then get an updated thing for presentation at a future meeting.
You guys all good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll also authorize, Ethan, to let them know that you're considering going out for the proposal. I've had that work very effectively several times with both of them.
Well, that goes without saying, right?
We'll drop it a little further to keep it, if they can, because it's a pretty good-sized contract.
That's a pretty sizable contract.
We'll move on to our next item under new business. That's consideration of K Camp Annual Meeting Voting Delegate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Kansas County multiline pool to cover our property and liability insurance. One of the advantages of the pool is it does allow us kind of a seat at the table in the direction of the organization. Per the bylaws, this does have to be an elected official, so it's not something you can delegate to a staff member, such as myself or Carlos or Brad, to attend on behalf of the city. So if we are going to participate in that annual meeting, it must be an elected body member. In the meeting this year, last year it was virtually, which was pretty convenient. This year, it's at 6:00 PM on Monday, October 18th, which isn't a council meeting date, but it's in Overland Park at the Sheraton. Obviously, if we have a member that wants to go and have a voice in those changes that K Camp's proposing, including rates, you know, we can facilitate that that travel. So it's up to you all whether you basically want a delegate from the City of Halsted there and participating or not.
I took the last year when it was on Zoom, so.
Been your experience.
Thanks, Ed.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, what do you guys think? Do any of you have any interest in being that delegate?
I particularly don't, no.
I would love to, but work won't dictate that for me, so.
How about you? Do you want a delegate there?
I think it would be good for us, too.
I think it would be good also.
Especially if it's a voting.
Yeah, if it's a voting delegate, especially if they start talking about rates and all that fun stuff, so, yeah.
Well, Ethan, are you interested in going?
I can. I cannot be a voting.
It's down to Dennis or I.
Oh.
You all.
Well, then you.
What if I made a motion for Dennis to be the voting delegate and you be the alternate?
Perfect. I can do that.
Make a motion to approve the mayor.
Seems true.
I second that thought.
Motion's on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Or we could go the other way. The thing is, is I'll probably end up having to bail. Because it's a clinical day.
Okay. Motion to approve the mayor as a voting delegate and Denise Clausen as the alternate delegate for the K Camp Annual Meeting.
Second. Got the motion and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
In case you don't want to drive back, Mr. Mayor, the Sheridan is full.
I appreciate you guys.
Just leave it the back of that truck.
You just take his camper.
Take Josh's car. That's the, that's the car, right? Running to meetings. Now, the next item on our agenda is we do have one executive session tonight, and I'm waiting for Ethan to get that motion prepared for Denise.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I move that this Halsted City Council recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss performance review of a city Halsted employee pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception or exception KSA 754319B1, and ask, in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and the city attorney. They'll be meeting in governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 7:50 PM.
Second.
Have a motion and second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are in executive session. We are in executive session. We are in executive session. Okay, we're back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement, we will move on, and the next section is the report section. And I'll start with the governing body, and I'll start with you tonight, Denise. Mike.
I am all good.
George.
I've got nothing. Thank you.
Ed.
Just, I think 204 Main looks very good. I'm glad to see the barricades down, glad to see the construction and painting and decorating on the outside being done. I think it was an excellent project and glad it's completed.
Yeah, the, the paint and the steel, once it got up, it really dressed it up, so I was pretty happy to see that, too. All right, I don't have anything tonight, so I'm gonna throw it over to Mr. Reimer for his manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Holstead activity for August was as follows. Police reported 113 calls for service, 70 traffic stops, and 21 criminal cases. The increase in traffic stops includes increased activity due to the old settlers weekend, and calls for service was about double what is typically seen. The watch guard camera system project is just about complete, as Gilmore has finalized setting up the new video server, and installation of the camera system is being scheduled for the Dodge Charger. Fire reported 20 calls for service, including five structure fire auto aids, nine EMS assists, and two vehicle accidents. As reported last meeting, the city received a 2020 AFG grant for rescue equipment, and Chiefs Van Scoyke and Hoffman have solicited competing quotes from vendors for that equipment and then ordered equipment accordingly based on those quotes. The first annual Smoke Bear Golf Tournament was also held at Wedgewood to benefit the fire department and raised around $2,500. So just good job to the fire staff that organized that, and thanks to Wedgewood for hosting. EMS reported 58 calls for service with approximately 60% of calls in the original Holstead response area and 40% in the Sedgwick response area. Total calls for the year stand at 391 calls, with a reported increase this past month, especially in COVID-related calls, according to the director. EMS staff do continue strict infection control procedures and personal protective equipment utilization when responding to calls for patient and provider health and safety. Parks and Recreation spent the majority of the month on old settlers-related preparation and work, and then the end of the pool season. Volleyball signups were completed, with Parks and Rec participating in the enrollment event at USD 440, and then games will be held throughout September and October. The pool's last day was September 5th, which was also the dog swim, which saw around 24-legged swimmers with their humans participate. Holstead High School's advanced physical education class utilized the pool for five days for classes at the beginning of the school year, and the pool training shutdown and winterization has begun. Director Williams also is seeking estimates from our local concrete contractors for certain needed repairs on the levee walking path and stairs, and we hope to have those back soon for evaluation. Wedgewood Golf Course hosted four tournaments, three of which included over 15 teams playing. Wedgewood staff completed aerification of the greens, replaced irrigation heads and a line break, removed trees and cleaned up the hedge row, and treated the course for worms. Luckily, not a lot of damage from worms was reported. Play did slow a little bit in August due to the heat, but rounds have picked up steadily as the weather has cooled down, and membership remains at over 100 members out there. Public Works completed 12 locates, nine building inspections for burials, 41 meter upgrades, five meter changes, two gas leak responses, one sewer stoppage, and hauled 15 loads of limbs from the storm. That was on top of also doing their old settlers preparation and tear down. They also managed to complete cold patching in the Ninth and Walnut area on areas that were feasible for that. They did mowing, tree removal, and street greating as well. And then installation of the cameras and access control have largely been completed. The project now awaits some work from our IT vendor, which is anticipated to be completed next week before final training and implementation of that new system begins in full, i.e. why the door was propped tonight, because we can't schedule a time lock yet. I participated in the Legislative Policy Committee meeting for the League of Kansas Municipalities. Suggestions and changes from the committee will be presented for consideration of the entire LKM membership at their annual meeting for inclusion with a statement of municipal policy for the coming year. And a reminder that that annual meeting is coming up in Topeka, and if you want to attend, please let myself or Carlos know. Safe Routes to School Committee continues their final meetings and getting information put together to wrap up that SRTS Phase 1 project by the end of this month. I continue participating in the KAMIT Health Insurance Task Force, and a presentation concerning plan design and hopefully pricing has been scheduled for later in September. We are of the right size and number of participants in our health insurance plan to potentially benefit from a cost standpoint on what they're trying to do, so we continue to eagerly see what, what they're able to come up with. I am also continuing discussions with the city's bond council on the proposed developers' agreement for the future development of Cedar Meadows 2, and hopefully we'll have something ready for next meeting as we continue that talk between us and the bond council. And then Mayor Travis and I participated in Harvey County Council of Governments meeting, and look forward to that group meeting regularly again in the coming months to discuss countywide and regional interests in Harvey County. And that is all I have to report this evening.
Thank you, Ethan. Counsel, anybody have any questions regarding Ethan's report? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.